Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, November 15, 2023, and you are joining us now for council time with Clark County, Washington, Council. We've had a robust work session this morning on the 2024 annual budget. And if you were unable to join us for that, I highly recommend that you take a look at the 50 slides that are posted online to catch up to date on that before we have our public hearing, which is scheduled still away in the future, but it takes a while to absorb everything that's in there. It's very, very compact and interesting. We are going to have after the council time agenda today, three executive sessions, one of which may have possible after action. So let's begin with public comment.
Chair Bowerman.
This is on a...
Excuse me, Chair Bowerman. This is Leslie Lopez.
Yes.
I would like to...
Yes.
I request that we amend the council time agenda to add one more executive session item.
Okay.
So that would be 7.4, and it would be pending litigation under RCW 4230-110-1I for 15 minutes and no after action.
Okay.
And Chair Bowerman, this is Kathleen. Just for the record, I just wanted to note that Counselor Young will not be joining us this afternoon.
Ah, so there are four of us because I think Counselor Belkot is back with us. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Counselor Marshall is here in the hearing room, and the rest of the council is online.
Great. Thank you so much. So we begin with public comments. This is on agenda items only, and by agenda items, I'm referring to the items that are on our council time agenda for today. Staff, do you see anyone in the hearing room or online who wishes to speak?
I don't have anyone in the hearing room, but I do have at least one person right now online. So caller, please state your name and go ahead.
This is Kimberly Goheen Albion, life citizen of Clark County, Washington. So on the minutes being passed of November 8th, it shows no one participating in open public comments. I was on the phone. I listened to the whole thing, and the staff ignored my participation. And in fact, it happens as it did happen yesterday at the 5:30 Ctran meeting. I was completely ignored. I really resent that because there's no proof other than my pictures that I take that I'm online. I have concerns as to why Councilmember Michelle Belkot has not been attending the meetings. The public should know why, and I'm not sure if her absences have been excused. I do see now the update that she is there right now. So as far as old business 2.2, keep out of our farms unless our hard-earned tax dollars are requested to actually help the farmers and farm lands. Are you supporting the Beezy Farm yet, fighting for their water rights? That's what I'd like to know. Do you pressure farm land owners into submission to sell out? I'm also asking that. I'm begging farmers to not sell their property to the county. Your work session, as Chair Bowerman mentioned earlier, at this meeting, most of the budget goes to the government's salaries. And I will suggest that this local government is too big. Cut out your salaries. Take a few people out of each group that you guys keep putting in during this COVID plandemic, thanks to the American Rescrew Plan. You're getting more and more employees there, taking more and more monies, and that's very evident in your budget. As far as the meetings of October 18th that are going to be passed, Mr. Young mentioned the Specialized Housing Incorporated. I'd like the citizens to know that that business is based in Beaverton, Oregon. They have a mission to help the elderly. Evidently, they've helped over 400 people. I would suggest here that in Clark County, Washington, USA, we have more than 400 people that would be needing help, senior citizens and the disabled people. So go ahead and fire some people, and then we can have a balanced budget. You guys are way too big government. I'm a little bit on the job here and stuff. I'm not as organized as you folks are, but at least I'm participating as a public citizen here, of which I'm begging the public to wake up after this doggone COVID plandemic, I might add. And I'm begging the council...
Are there any other public comments that you see staff or someone has an interest in speaking?
No, Chair, that's all.
We turn to old business and the minutes from November 8th. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I second that.
Is there anyone who wishes to edit or make a change to those minutes? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Thank you, and that they are passed unanimously. Item 2.2 of old business is the Down Payment Assistance Program update. Kathleen, are you going to introduce that, or Treasurer Topper, or how will this go?
This is set up at the request of council to have an update, and Treasurer Topper is here to provide that.
Thank you, County Manager. Thank you, Councilors. Thank you, Chair. My name's Alicia Topper, Clark County Treasurer, and I am joined today virtually with Dietrich Schmidt from the Down Payment Assistance Program Administrator for the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. As you recall, in April of 2023, the council approved the $2 million allocation to establish a down payment assistance program for first-time homebuyers here in Clark County, and we contracted with the commission in order to administer that program. I will go ahead and turn it over to Dietrich. He'll give you a brief overview of the program, some of the statistics to date, and then we'll open the floor for questions. Welcome, Dietrich.
Thank you, Treasurer Topper. Great to see you all. I'm glad to be here today. So the program, which we launched in April, had many, had a lot of time behind it to actually get it launched, but we're happy to have it up and active. We've reviewed some points. The Clark County came up with $2 million, and the commission pooled it with over $660,000 to create a program for Clark County residents to be able to get up to $60,000 in down payment assistance in order to buy a home. The loans we offer on the down payment assistance don't have to have payments on them until the buyer of the home sells, moves out, or refinances, or the first mortgage is paid off. To date, we've been able to utilize 50% of the funds to help folks buy homes. Next slide, please. So far, we've had 23 homes purchased based on the household size in each home that has given us 52 people in a home that is owned by them. We're quite happy to have that many people in. The age range has ranged from 22 years old to 64, with the average age coming up as 33. We have the average purchase price at $375,300 on these transactions, and the housing payment has come out at approximately 42% of the applicant's gross income on average. We've had some higher, or some as low as about 29%, and some higher than that as well. But it has definitely been a good amount of subsidy for folks who otherwise couldn't have purchased a home. Some of the stories I've gotten from the lenders who have worked on these loans, we have gotten single mothers into homes. We've gotten also some people who are the first people in their family to have purchased a home, which I thought was pretty exciting. Next slide, please. The demographics for the area, you can see from the chart how that's worked out. We've done, 57% have identified as white as far as the borrower goes, with 35% Hispanic and 4% Asian and Black each, based on the information we get, which I believe is better than the population at large. I also made a little map of the locations where the program has been used. It can be used anywhere in Clark County, but with housing prices and availability and where people work, you can see where the locations have wound up so far for the use of the program. Next slide. The home type, and this is just more for general info, but you can see about a quarter of them are condos. And the detached home, that's the 52%, that's just a standard, regular, standalone detached home. And we've also had some manufactured home and townhomes and planned unit developments as well in that mix. Next slide. My last slide. So that's kind of a general overview of the program to date. We're continuing to work to continue it forward, but I think we've helped some people who definitely would not have been able to purchase a home without this level of assistance. So I'm quite happy on that front. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has as well.
Chair, I have some questions.
Do you have any questions?
Chair, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So first comment, this is great. Thank you so much. I mean, across the board, I think these are very positive outcomes. So I would love to expand this program, and I'm wondering what reach we have across the state to advocate to our legislature to help fund this program, to continue it, to expand it, to make it available. So that's my first question. You know, what can we do with our local legislative delegation, and is there force across the state to pursue this program with more vigor?
Well, I would, you know, as far as contact with this legislature in general goes, it's a little above where my scope of work winds up being. But what I would say is that I think that this program illustrates how successful funding can be for homeownership. And I think this sort of information, and there's more data that I can gather as well that is available to me on the loans, but I think it's just a great example that can illustrate, drive home why funding this is a worthwhile effort.
So I have a smaller question regarding your data. It's great that you were succeeding with 23 homes. Were there any applications that were rejected? And if so, are there any trends in why? And then I'm really, would be interested if you did have data on your rejections for this money, how that works with the demographics for age and minority groups.
You know, I think that's a great question to ask, and one that I should, I can actually work to gather more information on. I don't have as much information as I'd like on that. And the reason is that the process, that the way it works is that loan applications come to us via the lenders, and the lenders may have had people not qualify already, but those don't come to us. What I would guess, though, is that it's largely would be if credit scores were too low, or if their debt burdens overall would have been too great. That said, it might be possible for me to gather some information by polling the main lenders who seem to work on the program and see if some insights can be drawn from that, and look at it as far as, and include the data that might be there as far as race and ethnicity, that's included.
So one follow-up question, just based on what you said. Do other counties that have this program all follow that same scheme, basically getting the applicants through the lender? Or do any of the counties have a more direct access to apply directly to the county?
Well, let me clarify how the overarching process is generally going to work, which is that the criteria for the down payment assistance aren't too intense or hard for people to get past. There's no, the down payment assistance itself doesn't have a credit score requirement or a debt-to-income ratio maximum, but the first mortgage that goes with them does. And those are all always going to be with the lender themselves. So different counties, unless they were themselves a mortgage lender, wouldn't have that information unless they had it drawn from the lender, because that's, the lender is where that process that you're talking about really happened. We are working on an overall report that will be coming out hopefully next year on the subject of the commission and racial equity. But that's kind of a next-year project that we'll hear more about. But I think it's something that, A, we should keep an eye on, and B, we should work to have systems that will generate that information to us, so we can answer your question more clearly.
Thank you.
Does that help? Any other questions? You got me here, I'm happy to answer them.
Go ahead. Counselor?
Thank you. I share those concerns and questions that Counselor Medveji has, and also his high praise for how great this program is. And one thing I'm wondering, has this exceeded your expectations? I can't recall what you were anticipating in terms of number of homes.
It has. Thank you for asking, Counselor Marshall. And to note, you'll notice that only 50% of the funds have been expended to date, and so the numbers that you see in terms of outcomes are for half of the funds. The other 50% was set aside for nonprofit housing partners who are targeting households at 80% or below area median income. And there is a pilot program that is being launched and developed with the Vancouver Housing Authority, Proud Ground, Habitat for Humanity, and NIA, where they're able to target families that will be able to get into new construction that are capped at $400,000 or less. So this DPA program will be a significant contributor to making those homes available to low-income families. So you should see those numbers climb. Hopefully, 2024 will be a successful benchmark year where we're piloting an incredible program that can be looked at across the nation.
And when do you think that would roll out, that collaboration with the nonprofits?
It's in the works now. I believe Counselor Medveji and Counselor Young met with the Vancouver Housing Authority and one of those private developers last week. They're still trying to work out some funding for land acquisition, but they do have a grant in with the Department of Commerce. Each nonprofit has applied for funding as a part of a collaborative. And I know that Roy Johnson, the current Executive Director of the Housing Authority, has met with Columbia Credit Union and secured some backup funding, a 0% interest revolving loan. And there's a lot of other elements that are in the works that have been secured.
Great. That sounds great. And really thank you for your leadership in bringing this forward. And I would agree, if there's an opportunity to identify some additional funding for this, I'd be supportive of that.
Thank you. And really, the thanks goes to council for approving the program and allowing the flexibility with ARPA funding. So thank you.
Can I add a few points to this last discussion? So Alicia, we really missed you at the meeting with the Vancouver Housing Authority and GIN as one of those developers. So the reason why I was really trying to find additional money in ARPA that hasn't been spent yet, either in the greater amount or within that earmark for our homeless plan, was to help fund this program that Alicia just mentioned, because it sounds great. The other part of the ask, I think, it's a little bit more limited, but I'm hoping that each counselor will hear the presentation to learn what the new program proposed is. And the remaining money, in its totality, about $1 million, could and should be allocated to this one initiative with Habitat for Humanity, Vancouver Housing Authority, and then the developer. But I'm looking for more, so that's why I'm trying to find those funds, if we have any remaining, because I think this is a great program, and I certainly want, and I'm assuming, Alicia, that you are fully supportive of this nonprofit effort. I would like to hear your...
Oh, thank you for that question, Counselor. No, I'm very supportive of this program from its inception. The model is very different in that the land would be owned by the nonprofit, and then the structure would be bifurcated and owned by the individual or family. And then there would be a cap on the equity that could be gained off of that property in order to maintain affordability into perpetuity. So it's a very different model. It's not for everyone, but I believe that there is a place in this housing market which is so competitive and becoming so costly that families will be able to build generational wealth going through this nonprofit model with the partnership with private developers.
Super. Thank you. So I'm hopeful all the other councils will get a chance to hear a presentation in one-on-one or two-on-ones.
Chair, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Alicia, maybe you mentioned this the last time you talked to us about this program, but I have two questions. How are you getting the word out about this program? And what is the timeline? Like, what's the average applicant time that it takes for people to apply? And if it's difficult, is there somebody to assist with them filling out the application to take advantage of this program?
Thank you for those two questions, Counselor Belkot. I'll take the first half of the question and pass the baton over to Dietrich. The way that we did our initial outreach, we had a very robust communication and marketing strategy, which included reaching out to local realtors and brokers, and also our nonprofit partners. We hosted in-person plus virtual sessions where they could attend, ask questions, learn about the program, and how to get their clients and future homeowners through the process to apply. In addition, we coordinated our website with the state commission and also with Clark County in order to promote the program, as well as several social media outreach attempts. So we did our best. We think we did a great job because the number of attendees far surpassed our expectations, and it seemed as though people were very excited at the time the program launched. And Dietrich, can you answer the Counselor's second question about timeline and average amount to get into the program?
Sure. So for most folks, it's about a 30-day process to really get up and running, and having, you know, from the point of initial contact to selecting a home to buy. And then the process for actually purchasing the home is normally 30 to 45 days. So most of the activity really can all happen within a 90-day window. As far as approval goes for the program itself, because a number of the lenders in Clark County have worked with our programs in general for quite a while, many of them were able to approve folks who were buying for the program within a couple of days, sometimes in part because some of these homebuyers that they work with, when they found out about the program, they realized that they might actually be able to find a home that they could now afford, whereas they maybe have been looking for a couple of years, in fact. So it's a pretty quick process as far as getting folks through, and most of the heavy lifting is just on getting approved for the first mortgage.
It sounds like just an excellent program. I just echo what the other counselors say. This is just, it's incredible.
Thank you.
So are you asking for guidance? Do you need three thumbs up to move forward with the nonprofit request for the remaining funds? How does that work? Are you just still working with the nonprofits? Is there, can you tell me what the next steps are?
Thank you, Counselor. So in terms of the nonprofit request, that's separate from the down payment assistance program. The contract's already been executed, and the funding has been dispersed to the commission, so they have it available once applicants have made their way to the program. But in terms of the Housing Authority and their nonprofit program, me as an individual elected official and as a Washington State Housing Finance Commissioner, I am supportive of the program and advocating and assisting where I can.
So you don't need any...
So no requests for the council.
You don't need any guidance from us, other than I will continue to look for more money to place against that program. But for today's meeting, you don't need any guidance or direction?
No, Counselor Medveji, this came at the request of Counselor Marshall to have an update on this program, and the council supported having the update. So this is really just the update on the program.
Super. Thank you.
Are there other questions from council? Well, Treasurer Topper, we thank you so much, to you and your guests, for being with us today. It is so refreshing and downright exhilarating to see how this is moving forward for the benefit of Clark County citizens with more to come. So thank you for the update, and we look forward to the next one as well, knowing that there'll be really great things that follow still.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And we now turn to new business and 3.1, Legislative Outlook.
Good afternoon, council. This is Jordan Bogie for the record. So we recently found out that there are a couple of extra seats available at the Greater Vancouver Chambers Legislative Outlook event on December 8th at 8:30. We found this out through our lobbyists, Josh and Annika. They have a table at this event with some other folks from the city of Battleground, and they wanted to know if we had anyone from council or the county manager's office who would like to take these two seats to join them learning about the 2024 Legislative Outlook from the Greater Vancouver Chambers perspective. And so I wanted to bring that forward so that if there was interest among a couple of counselors, we have those spots available, and we can make sure that we get that information forwarded so that you can attend.
What a really nice opportunity. Is there anyone on council who is both available and interested?
I am, but I think, Jordan, isn't one of those seats already taken by me, aside from the two?
That's correct. So I should have mentioned that. Counselor Belkot, and I talked about this a little while ago, Counselor Belkot independently is already planning to attend. And so we would then, if there were two counselors, have three counselors overall, so we would just need to notice that. But yes, this would be in addition to Counselor Belkot, who is already also attending.
And I did express my interest. I'm assuming I am available as one of those counselors, additional counselors, to Michelle.
Thank you, Counselor Medveji. And is there another?
Well, I have an interest, but I may have a conflict, so let me double-check on that, and I'll get back to you. I appreciate the offer.
Yes, indeed.
Well, we have, yeah, so we have two seats available. Originally, there was also, if there weren't two available, then I would potentially attend or Kathleen, and I may try to anyway, just because this does seem like a good event to attend. But yes, there are two seats available for council.
Seems like an excellent event for you and with your role. I would certainly support that. And also, may we get back to you in a couple of days on the possibility of a couple of other counselors having an interest?
Yeah, that sounds great. If, so it's... If, so it sounds like councillor Medvedji is, is for sure yes. Sounds like councillor Marshall is going to see if she can attend.
I think, I think, Jordan, if you, I think it'd be good for you to go, so I just defer.
Okay. And I, and I'm not sure, I think councillor Young might be interested, but I'm not, he's, he's not on right now, but I'd want to double-check with him to finalize that as well.
He likely, he likely would be, Jordan, but I, I think for you and councillor Medvee, Medvedji to be our representatives would be super.
Okay. Great.
Thank you for bringing that to us. Is there anything else on the Legislative Outlook?
That's all I've got, so if you're ready, I can move on to the Clark County Transportation Alliance.
Let's do it.
Great. So we got a policy statement from the Clark County Transportation Alliance. They, they put one of these out every year and they are looking for endorsement from each of their member organizations, of which Clark County is one. And so we would be looking today for three thumbs up from council to say that you support this policy statement as the Transportation Alliance works to advocate for these programs in Olympia and beyond.
Speaking for myself, I certainly support the programs that they have listed, but I was immensely disappointed that a third corridor was not highlighted by them, not mentioned as an action item. And we so desperately need that. If we indicate that we have an endorsement, I would ask that we also include the notion that we are looking for endorsement of a third corridor as well. Are there other comments from council?
I concur with you, Chair, on that. Also, is there light rail included on this? I cannot remember. I've looked at this before.
I can't remember if it's, it would be under Action 1, I believe, if it does state it specifically. I'm not sure that they list it out. I know that that is part of the current plan, but I'm not sure that this group's policy statement endorses that specifically.
I just would want to double-check that before I would give a thumbs up and, like the Chair mentioned, the third corridor.
Yeah. Kristin, if you scroll down a little bit, I think under facilitating transportation, mobility, economic growth, and equity, that final bullet point that is bolded there, they do, they do have a note about placing a high priority on long-range land use and strategic new transportation corridor planning to serve steadily rising population and commerce But it is a little more tucked away. It's not a, it's not directly saying anything in a, in a strong voice about a third corridor. But that, I believe, is how they have addressed that.
What's the timeline, Jordan, on responding to them on this?
It's just a little bit too discreet, to be understandable.
Yes, I, I agree. It's not, it's not clearly worded in a, in a clear and concise way.
What's the timeline, Jordan, on responding back to them on this?
I think they were looking for thumbs up by the end of the month, but I can double-check that. So there may be an opportunity to, to bring this back in a couple of weeks to council time, if, if you would like, for a final thumbs up.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a--
In the meantime, yes, one moment. And in the meantime, we need a good, close reading on whether or not light rail is included. So that'll be a major basis for our discussion the next time, I'm sure. Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how strong I want to be on this, but I'm gonna just kind of talk out, out loud. So that last bullet that's highlighted and, and pretty vague, I think was added in part from pressure I've put on the past on this very document. Because I have always, at the RTC and behind the scenes, said a third quarter needs to be an action item. It needs to be highlighted. It needs to be prominent. It needs to be prominent and acted on right now. From the visiting study decades ago that has resulted in no further action, it's malfeasance on the part of these bureaucracies not to highlight the need of an additional corridor. Because if we start planning it now in earnest as part of our comp plan, as part of our road infrastructure, working it with Oregon and through the RTC, it'll be at least 20 or 30 years before we ever see another corridor, whether it's a tunnel, a bridge, you name it. It's gonna take decades to get it through. So the fact that they're not highlighting the need for it, I think, is ridiculous. You know, I've tried to push this at RTC with little advancement. I chair the RTC and I still haven't been able to do much on the issue. The RTC is somewhat behind this document and very supportive of it. So I don't know what to do any longer, other than to say, tell them, we're not gonna sign it, we're not gonna support it unless you have this as an action item or more prominently stated as a major portion of this document. We are so far behind and this is a good method to telegraph the needs of the community, not only for Southwest Washington, but for Oregon and for the United States. This is a strategic corridor. Or we just simply say, hey, we're concerned, you guys still are minimizing this, you're not saying enough on the topic. We support the overall arching document, which I do. I mean, there's just so much you can put in the document, but this is one that's been irking me for the last five years and we're making, in fact, I think this is worse of a statement than they had in last year. I think they actually said, start planning a third corridor. So we're kind of heading backwards instead of moving forward on the topic. So I don't know what the rest of you think. I'm not happy with this one area for sure. And I, I would like them to listen. I would like them to get the message from us that we support a third quarter planning now.
Yes, go ahead, councillor.
Yes, thank you. I have, I didn't see last year's or previous year's, so I don't have a point of comparison. There are some things I like about this statement. I think the Action Item 1, that they refer to climate stewardship and social equity. And I think Action Item 3 related to safety enhancements, routes to school, and beginning to look at other modes of multimodal transportation. I think those are all good. One thing I would emphasize, if we have an opportunity to edit this in any way, is transit-oriented development. I know there's been bills in the past. I think that's really an important component. And, and then maybe not for this legislative session, maybe for the next one. I, I'm not sure how to participate in the development of this statement, but as we're going into comp plan update, looking at reduction of vehicle miles traveled, I think it would be good to have that lens applied to our recommendations. Because part of this, I know there's a number of these projects, I think, have been on the list year after year after year. And to some degree, I think there's some legacy of just Clark County and our sprawling development that has fostered the need for more road connections. So I think it'd be worthwhile, my recommendation going forward, but zero in on with that lens of reducing vehicle miles. Oh, and just one more thing, just looking at the specific list of projects R, which I think is the last one mentioned, it's just 10 million related to public transit. And I, I think that might be, there might be a need to be, have a higher number there.
Jordan, in your reading of this, did you see anything about lessening of congestion?
I believe they do talk a bit about that in, can you scroll up, Kristin?
They do mention it under Action Item 4, secure funding for priorities that reduce congestion, hotspots. Oh, and here, improve safety and deliver multimodal investment. So there we go.
Ah, yes, I just caught up with that. I was stuck on Action Item 4, letter B, which seems to address it a little bit as well, and C, a little bit as well. So it's alluded to, but that being our number one priority, I would like to see that really highlighted too, along with the third corridor.
Thank you. I'll, I actually have a meeting upcoming with a couple folks from the CCTA, so I'll be able to share that with them. And, and I can see to what extent there is any editing that can be done on this document. I believe it's pretty fully baked and at this point, they're just looking for endorsements, but I will ask about that and see if anything can be done in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else on the Transportation Alliance? Okay, Jordan, thank you for both of the reports that you gave. We appreciate it. How about councillor reports this afternoon? Work session requests?
None today.
Are there further policy updates?
There are. You get a little bit more of me here.
That's good.
So I, I've been talking to Josh and Annika, our lobbyists, and working with them to try to put together a finalized list of legislative priorities based on what I've been hearing from, from council, a draft list, to be, to be clear, to be, to take back to you for more consideration. And so I'm hoping to have that as a policy update at our next council time, which is on the 29th. So I'm, I'm meeting with Josh and Annika on Monday, so hoping to refine that a little bit to bring a, a document to council to review. So I wanted to give you that update. And then as, as part of that, have been talking with them about council's desire to schedule a meeting with our legislative delegation and trying to find a time that works for our legislative delegation and council. This is obviously a challenging time of year and as, you know, our delegation gets ready to start the short session here in January up in Olympia, we're, we're juggling some dates. However, just talked with Josh and Annika about some potential dates that they would like to propose to council and our delegation as, as times to meet potentially here in December. And so I wanted to raise that with council for your consideration. And the dates that they would be looking at are after council is typically out. And so these would be December 11th, 13th, or 14th, looking to find a time that maximizes attendance from the council and from our legislative delegation. So we've been working a little bit with Kristin to identify some, some open spots in, in schedules that might work. So I wanted to check with council, are those potentially dates that you would like us to pursue? And if so, we can do that. And if not, there may be an opportunity to try to do something in early January, although that does get difficult with the session starting fairly early in January. I will also say that Josh and Annika did let me know that if council was interested in going up to Olympia during the session, they could probably find a time for our delegation to, to meet with council in Olympia as well, although, you know, that would involve council having to, to travel up there versus the delegation coming down here, which would be the plan in December. If they were to, to join us in December, they would come to the PSC.
Which day of the week is December 11?
Believe it's a Monday, but let me, it is okay. It is a Monday.
So this is a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday scenario?
That's correct. And it would probably be Monday afternoon, 1:00 PM or later, on the, on the 13th, that Wednesday. I think it's a little more flexible, but we could schedule it, you know, at a similar time to either our typical work session or council time. Or on the Thursday, the 14th, it would likely be at 3:00 PM, if they're able to get that date scheduled.
Let me just toss this out. How about December 14th, because it is after a council time?
We don't have any council time scheduled on that date. The last council time is on Wednesday, the 6th, and that's the same right after our public hearings. So that's the last council meetings that we have through the rest of the year.
Ah, well then, actually, this Wednesday might be a very good one, because we typically have some time free on Wednesdays allocated to the, the council time meeting. Would that work for most? Would that be a 3:00 PM meeting as well, Jordan?
I'll be flexible, whatever time is settled on.
Same.
I will be traveling, but given councillor Young's example of being able to participate very remotely, I'll do my best to participate whenever it's set.
And Jordan, would that likely be about 3:00 PM as well?
If it was held on the 13th, it sounds like there may be some flexibility, but I think ultimately what Josh and Annika would like to do is offer a few different dates and, and times to the delegation to see what we could do to maximize attendance.
Sure.
When does the session start? Like, would the first week of January be an option?
I believe it starts the 8th, although I'm not 100% sure on that. So the first week could potentially be an option. It just sounded like it might be a little more difficult for our delegation than, than that mid-December range.
And understanding that this is a short session, do you know if there's any restrictions or anything that, you know, they're kind of recommending for this short session?
I am, I'm not sure. Restrictions in, in what sense?
How many legislative priorities and what types of priorities should be heard, or if there's others that should be part of a longer, regular session?
Yeah. So their, their focus is more on, on capital budget. And so in particular, Josh and Annika have described that a, you know, a discrete capital Josh and Annika have described that a, uh, you know, a discrete capital project somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000 would likely, uh, be the kind of project that could gain the most traction, uh, in, in this session. But yeah, more limited, more targeted, focused on kind of capital requests. And any ongoing, uh, priorities or bills from the previous session, uh, those would be good to focus on. However, it sounds like we were really successful last year in getting almost all of our priorities supported, which is great, but means that we don't have a lot of ongoing priorities to pull from last session to bring forward.
Nano bubbler emitters for lackadaisical watershed.
So let's take a look first at the when, and then, then we can talk about bubblers if you wish later. Um, are there any thoughts that, uh, December 13, Wednesday, would be acceptable? How about December 14, Thursday?
Again, I, whatever you want to do, I will be there.
Uh, same as Counselor Medvedji. I'm flexible as well.
Well, why don't we, uh, go with the 13th or the 14th in that event? And, um, see if one of them is preferable to the legislative group. Would that work, Jordan?
Yeah, that, that sounds great. I will, uh, I'll work with Kristin, and we'll, we'll look at schedules, and we'll follow up, uh, about the 13th or 14th as potential days to, to meet with the delegation. And we'll follow up and let you know how that planning goes.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I think we've all looked forward to this meeting, uh, becoming a reality. So this is great.
Thank you.
Anything else on policy updates?
I have just, um, a couple. And one is just a follow-up to Counselor Medvedji's request regarding the ARPA funding and the contracts and what might be available. So Laura was able to provide me a slide that had all the commitments, what's already been spent, if it's under contract. But we need a little bit more time to understand the contract language and the impact if it's reallocated. So, um, and I looked at the information that you sent, and it looks like the law of the building is for 2024. Um, so I'm hoping the 28th of this month at our next council time, I'll have a more comprehensive list of that information to present to counsel. Uh, so I just wanted to provide that update. Um, and then secondly, uh, Counselor Young is part of the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. He represents the council. Um, he is not able to attend their next meeting, which is on the 17th in two days at 12:30. Um, and there's no backup for, uh, for him on that position. And so, and usually we have Mike Lewis that also attends, but he is not going to be available on this Thursday. There really is only one action item, um, which is approving minutes. Uh, I, so I'm just asking if any counselor is available and would like to attend that meeting. We can send that information to you. If not, we can certainly ask for information and then send out, send that out to Counselor Young afterwards. And it is, um, on Zoom on the 17th, 12:30 to 2.
On Zoom to approve minutes. Wow.
I can take that if nobody else is available.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Kristin will send you the link and get you set up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, let's move into executive sessions, of which we have four. Um, and they will be totaling 30, 40, 50 minutes approximately. Two are pending litigation, RCW 42.30.110, section I, uh, one little I. Uh, and one of those has possible after-action, but they are about 15 minutes each. Uh, collective bargaining, 10 minutes, and real estate, 10 minutes. So it is now, uh, 13. Yes.
Excuse me, Chair Barman. This is Leslie Lopez. I apologize for interrupting.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that one of the items is potential litigation, and one of them is pending litigation, but under the same RCW. Thank you.
Very good. Got it. Okay, let's make 7.4 the pending litigation that you added. So we are currently at 13:55 as far as the time. Let's make it at, uh, 14:55. And oh, uh, 1500 that we return. Does that sound acceptable? And we'll see you back in council time then.
The Chair has asked to extend executive session for another five minutes, and the council will now reconvene at 3:05. Thank you.
This again is Wednesday, November 15, 2023. We are back in council time, Clark County, Washington, having, uh, gone through four executive sessions, one of which may have possible after-action. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Chair. I move for Clark County to join the lawsuit as a plaintiff in the lawsuit entitled King County versus Eli Lilly and Company et al., filed in the Western District of Washington.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, uh, to, uh, propagate that, uh, after-action. Is there any comment or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. And with that, we are concluded with, uh, the council time meeting and the adjoining, uh, executive session. Therefore, this meeting is adjourned.